...the United States of America and to the Republic where voices stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll take police first.
Sure. So, we're gonna go just a little bit out of order. Item two thirty-three is an appointment related to boards and committees. I believe the first one is a police.
Yes. And Chief Kent is here to make a recommendation on an appointment, Chief.
If I may for a second, the letter we just got.
Yeah, so before that, we just have a report to make from the chief prior to.
So, last week, if you bear with me, I received a letter from a person who requested I keep their name anonymous, but they said it would be fine if I shared it. So, I'd like to read it because it doesn't happen often in my, a lot of years in this business where I get blown away by a letter, but this did to me. "Good evening, Chief Kent. My name is, and I am writing you regarding Margie Taylor, Jackie Tayabi, and Bob Aloysi. It was a year ago tonight that I attended my first of many. Out of desperation and feeling like I had nowhere to turn, I reached out to Bob, who met me in the parking lot of Saint Mark's Church so I didn't have to walk in alone, as I was very nervous. My soon-to-be ex-husband was abusing opioids, and my living situation was growing darker by the day. I have two children. It was not just me at home. I left that very first meeting with many resources, support, courage, and I found that I was not alone, which meant everything to me at the time. Within two days, Margie and Bob helped me find a bed and a detox, and after that, a longer-term sober house. It was by the grace of God that this program and these individuals were there when I needed them. It was not only saved my life, but also his. They followed up with me on a daily basis just to give me more support and encourage me, and let me know that they were here for me on holidays, nights, weekends, and their kindness and support was not nine to five. I wanted you to know, after a year, my kids and I are doing great. My ex-husband is doing well also. Cadoos to your team and their dedication to helping the community and its residents. I don't know where I would be without them. Please keep my name confidential outside of Bob, Jackie, and Margie." So, she's obviously referring to our Perry program, Margie Taylor, Bob Aloysi, and I just thought I should bring this letter forward for a couple reasons, to recognize them and the great work they're doing. Jackie has since moved on. She's in the first semester of law school. But also, you know, if there's families out there that are feeling they're at a dead end and there's no place for them to turn, maybe hearing this letter, if they're watching this at home, there is a place to turn. It's not a bottomless pit. There is a way out. And Bob and Margie, you know, we're here for you. And I just thought it was a pretty extraordinary letter, and I wanted to make the board aware of it.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for sharing that. Any comments about that? I don't think anybody could've said it better than that, but if anybody would like to add a comment, I would welcome that at this point. Yeah, I mean, we hear about that sort of thing, and it's difficult for us to think about people in our community that struggle, but it's, at the same time, it's encouraging to know that people care, and by default, we care. So, thank you for sharing that, and thank you guys for the work that you do.
I think that shows that there are resources out there. It's difficult, but, you know, you just make a phone call, and you can at least have somebody to talk to. So, I think that's the key there. And I just want to commend Officer Aloysi for, you know, heading this up in the beginning, and also Captain Ski and, you know, Greg, you did a lot of work, I know, on the grant program with that, and have been active in, you know, that community base. So, Captain Ski and Bob Aloysi and Jackie, of course, you know, and Margie. Jackie's gone, but Margie's still with us, and we appreciate the work that they do. And we've done a lot of outreach on this, you know, trying to get it out there. I know the program is very active at Saint Mark's, you know, with that, so people have options, you know, if they wish to pursue that. So, with that, why don't we move on? So, Chief, we have an opening within a department, and you're ready to make an appointment?
This is Amanda Santos. She's a Watertown resident. She's a graduate of UMass Amherst Commonwealth Honors College in 2017 with a double major in sociology and legal studies. While in college, she served as an intern in the Eastern Hampshire District Court Probation Department, and she also interned with the Watertown Police Department. She joined the UMass Amherst Police Department as a student cadet in 2016, and became a full-time police officer at the UMass Police Department in February of eighteen, after graduating from the fifth session of the Northern Essex Community College Police Academy, where she was part of a fifty-six-person academy class. While at the academy, Officer Santos completed an intensive twenty-four-week program that covered constitutional law, prevention and intervention, community policing, domestic violence, elderly abuse, among other things. Officer Santos speaks fluent Portuguese, conversational Spanish, and basic French. Once she is through with, once she gets appointed tonight, she will undergo ten weeks of field officer training and intensive program, and upon successful completion of that, she will be on the road on her own. I would recommend Amanda Santos be appointed a police officer.
Thank you, Chief. So, we had gone through the process, and we're in our third round, Chief. So, third round of candidates under our new process. And so, Amanda is our first recommendation from that third round. We were very impressed during the interview. Thus, both engaged. I stayed awake the whole interview, which is pretty good for me on that. And I was really impressed, as you know, I struggle with one language, especially in a written format. So, she speaks three and is working on her fourth, so very impressive with that. So, see, I get myself hits to, you know, so. So, with that recommendation from the chief, she is academy certified, as it says, so she'll be able to hit the streets right away. So, with the chief's recommendation, I hereby appoint Amanda Santos as a police officer within the Burlington Police Department, and request the board of selectmen waive their fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
So, we have a motion from Jim to waive the waiting period, second from Joe. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Five, zero, zero.
So, we'd like to welcome Amanda as our newest police officer.
Congratulations.
And Mr. Chairman, as a change in a procedure, at the chief's recommendation, we've asked the town clerk, Amy Warfield, to be here to come up front and to swear in the new officer right here.
Yep, we in?
Don't mess up, yeah.
Aye, Amanda Santos.
Aye, Amanda Santos.
Do solemnly say.
Do solemnly say.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties.
Incummit upon me.
Incummit upon me.
As a Burlington Police Officer.
As a Burlington Police Officer.
In accordance to the bylaws of the town.
In accordance with the bylaws of the town.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Chief? Get your family with the chiefs. Get one with the chief first. With the chiefs, and then...
You only charge us pretty much.
Do you have the phone? Take picture. Yeah, go ahead. Get your phone out, take some pictures. Get in there.
Sorry.
Be nervous.
Okay, great. All right. Anything else, Chief? Or else that? Okay, thank you. Thank the members of the department for coming in tonight, so. Chief, chief. Chief, in the office. We have a second employee appointment, if you wish, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Okay, next is DPW. We have Director John Sanchez to make a request for appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, I have a recommendation tonight to appoint Mr. Christopher Hayes to the position of Special Heavy Motor Vehicle Operator. Chris had been employed with us about five years ago in a position in the cemetery as a temporary employee, as well as some custodial work he did for us. Over the last four years that he's been away from the town, he's actually got some experience both with tow trucks and, most recently, snow plowing, as well as driving dump trucks, which is one of the main requisites we get for somebody who works in the highway department. So, I am very happy to recommend Chris for that job. He also has obtained a hoisting license, as well as a CD-L eight, which is for tractor-trailer driving, since the last time that he was here in the town. So, with that, I do recommend Chris for the position of Special Motor Vehicle Operator, and I hope that you recommend it as well, John.
Thank you, John. So, we have Chris Hayes being recommended by the director. I did family background check, that was a problem, but in spite of that, you know, he has great qualifications for the position, and will do a great job within the department. So, with the recommendation of the director, I hereby appoint Chris Hayes to the Department of Public Works in Highway Division, and request the board to waive its fifteen-day waiting period. So moved.
Motion from Joe, second from Mike, to waive the fifteen-day waiting period. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Great. Chris, congratulations. Go on up.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I don't know if we're gonna tell it to them about.
Thank you. Thank you. Chris, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All best.
So, go ahead, John, you have something else?
Yes, two things. One, I acknowledge...
You're gonna ask us to extend the snow budget already?
Well, we just got a new driver, so it's great. No, I'm gonna acknowledge the presence of a lot of our members of the department, which are behind me, siding with Mr. Kevin Keane, who will be his supervisor, and also former members of the department, who are also present in the back. So, thank you for them being here tonight.
Yeah, still appreciate, like, Donnie always showing up here, you know, even though he's been retired thirty, forty years, whatever it is, you know, but... We're ready for plowing? We're still looking for part-time?
About that.
And John wasn't gonna ask for snow budget, but he still complains about water bans, so I just, you know, I'll point that out.
And if I may, there's one thing that normally would've been at the end of the meeting, but if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
Your waste collection this year has been particularly difficult to our contractor, and we have received many calls about being late with the pickup. We actually met with the contractor last week, and when I said "we" is the three towns that formed this consortium for solar waste collection. So, we met with them to figure out ways to do it better, as well as how they're gonna complete this share. And they put out a statement today that we posted on the website, as well as our social media page that we have for the Public Works Department. Pretty much what they're acknowledging, and we're telling our residents, is that, yes, we know they're delayed. There's been weather issues, we had the storm, as well as operational issues that delayed the collection. But they're committed to pick up every one of the homes where leaves are. So, even though the deadline that we have is this week, if your leaves are out there, just keep them out there. They will complete the work. They're committed to complete it within this week, maximum ten days from now. But there's a commitment they gave to us, and I wanted to pass that along to you, as well as to the residents at home.
Thank you. And as folks saw, we are in snow season already. We had our first eight-incher, I believe, so let's, you know, watch yourself, you know, during those snowstorms. And again, our crews do a great job in this community. Our roads are always in better shape than communities around us, so again, kudos to Kevin Keane and his folks with the job that they do in this town with snow pickup.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
So, just to stay with the program, we're gonna circle back to item two thirty-two, which is another appointment. This is for the Bylaw Review Committee. We had a candidate presented to us, and this is a committee that town meeting, town meeting requested be put in place, and you, the board of selectmen, have one appointment to that committee.
And that appointment is...
From the citizen base, they had one employee appointment, which is the Building Department, which has already been taken care of. Uh huh. And I believe this appointment specifically is supposed to come from the business community, and I believe this person is a small business owner. So, certainly qualified, certainly somebody that cares. So, I'd like to go ahead and have us take care of that appointment this evening. The name that we have is Sally Willard, whose present employer is a company called Wizard Associates, and she has expressed an interest in helping out with this bylaw review committee. So, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and let's try to get that committee on.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. So, motion, motion from Mike, second from Bob. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero. So, if you could let her know, Betty, that'd be great. Thank you. Has that committee met at all, do we know?
I believe they have met, from what I understand, so they have started.
Okay. And those meetings are open to the public?
Correct. They'll be posted, as all meetings are, on the town website.
Okay. Thank you. Item two thirty-four is a update or...
It should be, actually, it's Ways and Means. So, Ways and Means is looking to provide an update, and I think Roger Riggs is going to do that, the chairman of Ways and Means, as to a request that they had for an investigation that they're conducting. So, Roger Riggs as chairman can start, I believe.
Right. Thank you. Good evening. So, if everybody remembers the rather protracted discussion that happened around the school financial, the overrun, and the bulk of it was resolved at town meeting. In parallel with all of that activity, we received, Ways and Means received a petition from four hundred-plus residents and town meeting members to investigate, further investigate the overrun and to provide supporting information. According to Burlington's general bylaws, they, a petition of the residents can ask that Ways and Means investigate any financial matter in the town, and the, so we're pursuing that. The Ways and Means School Subcommittee has been following the issue sort of throughout, and they have, they've always had a keen interest in understanding the details of how the overrun occurred and how it got resolved. So, they're continuing to work on it. This petition supports that effort, and the investigation into the particular overruns of the 2018 school budget is the focus of their investigation. They're, they're gonna look, they're looking into the supporting details that back up the amount that was requested at town meeting to resolve the deficit, which is completely resolved at this point. They're gathering information from the school business office related to the details and the backup, both processes, procedures, and item-by-item things. They're getting very good help from the school business office, and they're getting the information that they've been requesting. They're in the middle of digesting that information, and they were, you know, they will work through it to its resolution, hopefully in the near future, but they're still looking for the data. The reason we're here tonight is the bylaw for the town for the petition is worded to, as a petition to Ways and Means with the subsequent approval of the Board of Selectmen. So, we're here to update you on the issue and understand if there are any concerns that Board of Selectmen have in, are pursuing the investigation. The co-chairs of the school subcommittee, Sue Harrigan and Diane Creedon, are here to answer any questions. So, if you have any questions, if you have any concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir.
Yes. How long do you anticipate this taking, or do you want it to take?
I think we wanted to wrap up as quickly as possible. The scope of the investigation has been pretty narrowly focused on, in particular, on the overruns and the details, so we're trying not to stray too far from the core issues. I don't know, probably gotten, we've gotten maybe more than half the information that's been requested so far, and with it continuing the way it's been going, I think we should be done, we hope to have a final report by January town meeting.
Okay. That's ambitious.
We've been meeting since October.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? What is the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. No, they provided quite a bit of backup material for us to review, so it looks like a pretty thorough.
So, just in general, for the benefit of the people at home that may be watching, what's the goal of this?
So, many, nearly everybody has heard all the discussions at the school committee and at town meeting where the issue was discussed at length, and a couple of issues. The goal, our goal is to understand just the details that back up the bottom-line numbers, and to make sure that we understand if there were any procedural or process issues that led to the circumstances. And with an eye toward turning those around and making sure that it doesn't happen in the future.
From a financial standpoint, not from a policies and procedural standpoint of the school department?
Yes. Primarily financially. Obviously, good fiscal processes are of keen interest to everyone on Ways and Means.
Sure.
And those will be, you know, we're looking, they'll be looking at those and making sure that we agree with, or if we have any suggestions, with the process and procedures that the school committee and the business office are putting in place moving forward.
So, having some appreciation for what you guys go through, starting in January and ending in April or May, this is something that you feel you folks have time to do?
Yes. We've gotten good information, and it's proceeding fairly well, so I think it'll be wrapped up, hopefully sooner than the January town meeting, but, and in particular, as you point out, the next budget season starts very soon. I mean, we usually don't start meeting every week until February, but there are a number of steps before that. So, we, I anticipate that we'll wrap it up before the Ways and Means Committee as a whole has to start on the new budget.
Great. So, is that, is that kind of the idea, that you'd be circling back for the January town meeting? Is that sort of what your landmark is?
Yes.
Okay. Right, okay. Well, you certainly have the right people. I just, I feel like this is something, personally, speaking only for myself, I feel like this is something that's been discussed ad nauseam, I guess, so, but I'm not the one that's going to do the work. So, if you folks are willing to do the work, and the folks, if this is what people want, then this is what people want. So, thank you for being willing to undertake this. Any other questions or comments? No?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we vote to approve and support this for the Ways and Means.
I need it.
Excuse me? I'm just saying...
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so, motion from Bob to approve and support this.
Second.
Second from Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstained, zero. So, four, one, zero, in favor. So, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a little early for two thirty-five. Can we start that, or...
No. I was gonna do it.
So, that's fine.
If you want, we can just talk about this for a minute.
Daddy's getting into the taxes, if you want. Okay, so that's not part of...
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, in preliminary to the tax classification hearing, the town, you know, for probably four or five years now, has been doing a neighboring community rate-fee profile. So, basically, it is a review of thirteen communities, and just looking at our financial capacity as compared to our neighbors in general. So, these are all contiguous towns to Burlington, and towns contiguous to our neighboring towns. And so, you've been seeing this, and, you know, Ways and Means has been seeing this, and this has been handed out to town meeting members over the last several years. So, you can see just the information relative to this. So, this talks about tax rates, the residential tax bill growth, tax by class, revenue, debt, and fees, and so on. And again, Burlington always does very well. I won't get into the details on this. But the one is the average single-family tax bill, which is how we compare community to community relative to that. And when you look at the fourteen communities in this area, again, Burlington does very well. Basically, only one community has a lower single-family tax rate than Burlington, and that's the city next to us, Woburn. One of the interesting things is, this shows a comparison from 2012 to 2018, and over the last six years. In 2012, Burlington had the one hundred and thirty-fifth highest tax, single-family tax bill in the state. It's climbed up to one sixty. So, we've done better than all the communities in the area for that. So, that average increase on a yearly basis over the last six years is two-point-seven-five percent. The state average is three-point-nine-six percent. So, we've increased the single-family tax bill on average two-point-seven-five percent over the last six years, as compared to the state average of three-point-nine-six. So, that's about a point, a percent and a quarter difference from that. And you can see here that some communities, you take the community of our neighbor Wilmington, has increased on average seven-point-six-five percent per year over the last six years. So, you see how Burlington has feared against our neighbors and how we fear against the state average.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I'm reading this correctly, I think we're only two-point-five-three, not two-point-seven-five.
I'm sorry, two-point-five-three. So, two points, so two-and-a-half percent, so it's even better, if I took the wrong right line here, so, gotta start thinking about glasses. So, two-point-five-three percent. So, you can see, again, that we do better than the communities. And when you look at, again, the, when you look, take fees into consideration, one of the things Burlington really doesn't have a lot of is outside fees. We have no school bus transportation, athletic fees, trash fees. So, we provide all of that as part of the tax rate. So, when you look at that, again, we do quite well, as compared to the other communities. So, this is just, you know, an opening discussion as we get into the tax rate piece. I thought it was, you know, capable of filling time here, and when you look at our financials, again, we're a triple-A rated community. So, that's as high as you get in this area, triple-A. When you look at our reserves, our reserves are at twenty-one percent of our total, which is very good. And our debt is, has a very low debt ratio as compared to budget. Only one community does better on the debt ratio than we do. So, again, our debt is low in comparison, our reserves are high, and our tax bills do quite well. I realize it's all relative. People will have, you know, even though I can cite all these numbers, people are still going to...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I'm reading this correctly, I think we're only 2.53, not 2.75.
I'm sorry, 2.53. So, two points, so two and a half percent, so it's even better if I took the wrong, the right line here, so, gotta stop thinking about glasses. So, 2.53 percent. So, you can see, again, that we do better than the communities. And when you look at, again, the, when you look, take fees into consideration, one of the things Burlington really doesn't have a lot of is outside fees. We have no school bus transportation, athletic fees, trash fees. So, we provide all of that as part of the tax rate. So, when you look at that, again, we do quite well as compared to the other communities. So, this is just, you know, an opening discussion as we get into the tax rate piece. I thought it was, you know, capable of filling time here. And when you look at our financials, again, we're a triple A rated community. So, that's as high as you get in this area, triple A. When you look at our reserves, our reserves are at 21 percent of our total, which is very good. And our debt is, has a very low debt ratio as compared to budget. Only one community does better on the debt ratio than we do. So, again, our debt is low in comparison, our reserves are high and our tax bills do quite well. I realize it's all relative, people will have, you know, even though I can cite all these numbers, people are still going to talk about their individual tax bill. But again, when you look at the fiscal health of the town of Burlington, it is in very good shape as compared to the state averages of what we do. So, I think that brings us to the point of being able to open hearing on tax classification.
Yes, thank you for that. So, let's go ahead and do that. This is a public hearing, item 235. This is for potential approval of the tax classification for fiscal year 2019.
Yes, and we have our financial team coming to the table, so Paul Sagorino, our town accountant, assistant town administrator, soon-to-be town administrator, Brian Curran, longtime treasurer collector, and Jim Dougherty from the Board of Assessors. And we also have elected assessors in the audience, sitting in the back. Maybe we should bring them to the table and, you know, because Dougherty will keep us all night. So, but we also have our three elected assessors here, Kathy O'Neil, Louise Crocker and Paul Shan from the Board of Assessors as backup, you know, to our team here. So, Paul, are you going to lead off or?
I think Jim usually leads off.
Jim leads off.
Thank you, John. And I just mentioned to a member, I just wanted to thank John. This will be the last classification hearing that I, that I have with him. And as usual, he's quick on the draw. I thought I would get him first, but all I can say is, we'll sorely miss a guy that knows how to fill time. In all sincerity, it's been a joy to work with John during this period of time, both on the classification rate and other issues, so we will, we will dearly miss him and look forward to the invitation to Florida.
Well said.
So, we're here tonight again to, to present various options to the Board of Selectmen. As we know, this is a very important task that the board is confronted with each year and we've provided this documentation to you. I think the board has historically voted for classification, which is a tremendous assistance to the residential property owners in the town. And I believe in my personal dealings with the members of both this board and other members I've, I've had the pleasure to work with over the years, they've taken that responsibility very seriously and have always, in my opinion, done the right thing as best they could to keep some level balance for the residential taxpayers of the town. Having said that, I'd be more than happy to either walk you through the document or, in the interest of brevity, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. When we do that, when we open it up, the questions, we've had the benefit of the backup material and we've had conversations surrounding this. Does anybody have any questions or any, anything they want to bring up at this time?
No, no, I was just going to say, I think they, the four years that I've been here, they've done a great job, group up front and group up back with our tax rates and what they come to us with and stuff, even on the commercial side of it. It's still a very good rate for the commercial side, even though we have a lot, sometimes you listen to residents say, how come the commercial doesn't pay for this and how come the commercial doesn't pay for that? But there's a point where they can only pay for so much. So, I think with the tax rate that is, that we're going to hopefully vote on tonight, the guys have done a great job with that.
Yes, sir.
We've been talking about this, so we know what's here. Anything that the three of you need or want to say so that the people who are watching know what we're talking about? Jim?
I've, I've, you know, my comments. I guess I defer to my colleagues here.
Sure. The options that the board's been provided are all slight variations of the amount of tax dollars it needs, we need to balance the budget and set a tax rate for fiscal year 19. Just so the public knows, fiscal year 19 started on July 1st. So, the actual budget guidelines and the spending process for the current budget 19, we actually voted on last year for budget guidelines in the fall, right around this time. So, all of this, this entire spending plan was generated a year ago. We were given a five percent levy increase. We're able to meet that tax levy increase guideline. The actual tax levy came in around 4.87 percent. As Jim and John indicated earlier, that trickle-down effect to the single-family homeowner is mitigated slower than that due to the shift in the classification that you'll be voting here tonight. So, any of these options work, they're all slight variations of the same thing in terms of what the town considers for classification each year.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Anything you want to add?
I just think it's, it's very admirable. I've gone with through the numbers and how we compare to, you know, comparable communities and other communities in the state. We know we have one of the best tax rates in the state, obviously, we're very fortunate. But the interesting part is we stay within our guidelines every year and we work very hard at that between the Ways and Means and administration and town meeting and obviously the different boards and especially the selectmen too. But our levy limit and whether we're under or whatever, we're, we're increasing how we're under the levy limit like the last three or four years, which is amazing, that we could still levy more taxes if we wanted to. We keep increasing that number. You know, in fiscal 18, it was 10,345,000 and this year it's 11,517,000. Amazing, we keep increasing, we could even, you know, raise taxes even greater, which is the strong financial capacity that we have here with, with the industry that, you know, Joe was just talking about. And I think the reason the industry stays here, obviously, or wants to come here, is because we are reasonable with the, with the business tax rate and we do attract business here in spite of some, you know, things that happened at the Plainwood and other places. But I think that we've done a great job to attract business, to keep business, and we keep increasing the levy limit. But obviously, we are very concerned about our residents and, you know, some taxpayers were at the counter today asking questions about, you know, what, what the rate's going to look like coming up and so forth and overheard some of the conversation. And, you know, we unfortunately say, you know, taxes really never go down and the reason they don't is because of services. At the town of Burlington office, we offer great services and we don't have the fees and things that John mentioned, excuse me, it's, obviously, the students don't go to school and have to pay using fees and all those things. The same with the rubbish and garbage, which is, you know, a great benefit to this community. So, I think we deserve compliments for the way we do things in Burlington.
If I could just give one other plug, and I do this every year, in addition to the financial team and the boards, I think the department heads do a great job of living within the guidelines that are presented to them and they, they make it work at, at the street level.
Thank you. Jim?
I just want to thank you for the backup material, just easy to read, it's very easy to follow, it's very clear-cut. Not only the backup material for Burlington, but the backup material that John mentioned earlier with the research with the other towns too, it just made, it's just so easy to read and very, very clear as where we are, where we're going and where we've been.
Jim, did I get anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Just two quick things for me and it could be for any of the three of you. Jim, you're probably the most appropriate person to answer the question, but could you talk about what the change was in the average value of specifically, if you want to get into residential and commercial, you're welcome to, but I'd be curious, I'd like to have you say, we've all been given the information, but I'd love to have for the folks at home, get the information on the overall increase in the average value of properties in town.
Sure. I don't track it for the commercial property, basically because the commercial property varies so much, obviously, from a small place on Cambridge Street to, you know, the Burlington Mall, for instance, so it would be a very distorted average or so. But residential, particularly single families, which I think, you know, most of the people watching are really concerned about is, when I first came to town about eight and a half years ago, most of the housing, most of the sales were anywhere between 300 and 500, 600, 000 dollars. And the people at home don't need me to tell them what's been taking place in property values in the region, but in particular in Burlington, they see it every day in the neighborhoods, whether it's tear downs or whatever. So, we've had a tremendous amount of, you know, million, million-plus homes being, being constructed and now we have a decent amount of them. So, we've seen the average residential property go up clearly. Last year, for assessment purposes, it was 477,500. This year, it's 502,500. Now, that is just single-family homes. We take out condos, we take out apartments and other things that will fall into the residential class. Again, to give a more realistic idea of truly what the bulk of our residential property is, which is single-family homes.
Thank you.
Jim, can you just repeat those numbers for me, please?
Sure. And also, Jim, I would point to, on the average tax bill, it's on the left-hand column, second one in.
All right, I got it.
So, last year was 477,500 and this year it's 502,500.
Thank you.
Yep.
And while we, and you alluded to this, we tend to look at potential increases. We do it in such a way that the spread between the commercial rate and the residential rate is kept at the level that it's been at over the last several years. Recognizing that, it's easy for my neighbor to say, you know, put any increases on the backs of the commercial property owners. We recognize that it's a delicate balance because these commercial properties are, in many ways, they're taxed, aren't they taxed based on how full they are and how successful they are? So, there's a direct correlation between their success in their ability to rent space and have vibrant businesses in those spaces that has a direct result on how they're taxed. So, it's easy to say, go ahead and just assign taxes in a certain way, but we've got to give business owners an opportunity to be successful as well because that's how we're able to maintain the spread that we have now. Is that?
I mean, there's no doubt about that. And again, this is kind of where I tip my hat to what you guys do and the tough job, let's face it. It's never an easy thing to have to vote in terms of something that truly affects people's pocketbooks and in particular, the residential people. And so, for instance, last year, the residential class picked up 38, slightly over 38 percent of the levy. This year, we were able to bring it down largely through your help and clearly through your vote tonight and it will result in close, slightly below 38, 37.8 about. So, you know, it's not, it doesn't sound like it's a huge difference, but it's, it's doing the right thing, looking at that balance, but also where there's, we want to treat all property taxpayers equally. However, you know, whenever we can, and I think I hear from you guys all the time, we like to give a little help to the residential wherever we can. And that's what you're doing if you end up adopting option B.
And last question for me, we have opportunities for people to, do we still present opportunities for people to work in exchange for consideration?
I'll let Brian talk about that. His office is largely responsible for that.
Yes, we do. We have a program where, you know, seniors can have upon the work-off program, they can, they can earn a certain amount of money off their tax bill annually and that's gone up the last couple of years and it's 1,500 dollars now a year.
Thank you.
The other, the other thing, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I know it's something you speak to me about all the time and that's regarding exemptions for various taxpayers that are eligible, whether it's the elderly, whether it's the veterans, whether it's the blind. Again, Burlington's been at the forefront of that long before I came on the scene and I know you're always asking me how you can reach out, how we can try to make sure more people know it's available. And we try to work with the Council on Aging for that, you know, opportunities like this, we don't, we don't get to go on TV too much, but I strongly encourage anybody that thinks or is just curious, they may know somebody that may qualify or just might not, you know, know what's going on with it, to contact my office, contact Brian's office or the Council on Aging and reach out and try to get some more information and potentially avail yourself to some of these exemptions, which can substantially impact in a negative way, in a reduction way, their property tax bill. So, it's, it's something the town spends a lot of money on and again, is far more generous than most communities and we would love to see people take advantage of that if they qualify.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We brought up the item about the seniors, John, so that you can go and ask the folks in your town if there's any consideration extended in your retirement as you convalesce, that might be something you might want to look into.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, but I'll probably forget by the time that comes along, so.
Okay. So, with that being said, and thank you guys for the, for presenting the information, as Bob mentioned, we've had the benefit of a lot of backup on this. We've all had opportunities too and we've all taken advantage of those opportunities by having conversations with folks brighter than us when it comes to stuff like this. So, I believe we've got a recommendation out of the group as to how we want to approach the classification options for fiscal year 2019, if anybody wants to share that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We've gone through the information and as all three members have indicated, there's small variations, but, you know, they can be significant to the individual who's looking at them for themselves. And I think the, the option that I would support would be that what we have here is the option B, where the, the single rate classification for residential, because we're voting on the classification rate, correct?
Voting on, correct.
Right. Would be for the .61, 8061. So, that would be a 4.16 percent, but the average residential bill would only be 3.85 percent increase. That's not a motion yet, that's.
Sure, but that's option B.
B, yes.
Okay. So, if you could, Jim, just maybe briefly elaborate on exactly what that means?
So, essentially, what will take place if you elect that option is the tax rate will be reduced. Residential tax rate will go down from 1062 to 1048. The commercial tax rate will go down from 2756 to 2722. However, as you know, we're required by law to constantly on an annual basis review the assessed values of the property. In doing so, clearly, assessments, as people see in the marketplace, again, assessments are going up, so I don't want to mislead anyone. I think the real good news is what Bob just mentioned, which is it would result in an average, again, going back to what we talked about earlier, we've got a lot of new construction, but on the average assessment, it will work out, and that's the 502,500, an average increase of approximately 195 dollars, which Mr. Sagorino sent me a clipping from the Lowell Sun and I think Bill Ricker was going up, Paul, 230 dollars or something?
213 or 230, it was one of those.
So, clearly, they're going up higher than, than, than what your action, if you, if you vote on that, will be. And again, on the average assessment, that's a 3.85 percent increase. So, again, in comparison to a lot of other communities, I think, I think that's a, that's a really good result.
And under that particular option, the average tax bill, average residential tax bill would increase, as Bob mentioned, annually by 195 dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if I could?
Yeah.
I think when you make the motion, you, unless, John, do you want to expand on that?
Okay, you can finish.
The factor will be 1.605308, which you will see there right below, Bob, that residential one you mentioned.
So, those are the two factors being requested. So, .618061 for the residential and for the commercial, industrial, personal property, 1.605308. So, that's what's being discussed by the board.
Okay. Any other question?
If, if there isn't a one. If there isn't another comment or questions, I would make that a motion then. For option B, which is the two classification factors that John just read.
Second.
So, motion by Bob, second from Joe, for on the commercial side, one-point-six-zero-five-three-zero-eight, and on the residential side, an increase of point six-one, eight zero-six-one. Did I say that right? Yes. So, all in favor of said motion and second?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, so five-zero-zero.
So, great. So, what that means is, just again, point out that the commercial portion of the value is thirty-eight-point-five percent of the total value, but they're going to be paying sixty-two percent of the taxes. That's what this classification is set up. And one other point to make is that if we had it even, the same tax rate, commercial and residential, the average residential bill would go up thirty-four-hundred dollars. So, that's a subsidy that the commercial, you know, by having a higher rate, is paying towards the residential side, which is substantial. So, when people, you know, say, you know, is business supporting residential in this town? Absolutely, is the answer, you know, when it comes to that. So, I just want to recognize, we also have Tom Murphy from School Committee and Roger Riggs from Ways and Means just did stay, you know, for this discussion, so... So, this will end with that vote. This ends the fiscal year nineteen discussions, you know, at this point. Setting of the tax rate is the final piece. So, we begin fiscal year twenty next week, so fiscal year two thousand twenty, wow. So, we'll begin, we, we have a meeting next Wednesday for financial guidelines. That will be on the agenda of the Selectment School Committee and Ways and Means during the month of December to set our financial guidelines for fiscal year two thousand twenty. I just want to point out the transition piece, as we've been talking about. So, this has been your financial team. This is changing, as, as the board's aware. So, John D'Nizio will be sitting in Paul's spot. Paul will be sitting in my spot, leading that discussion as, as we move forward. So, I just want to, you know, point out that the transition is beginning, and that's what will be taking place. So, again, just want to recognize the Board of Assessors being here tonight, you know, thank them for their appearance, and I want to thank Jim for being a little bit more concise tonight. It's not one of his usual meetings, where he's been a lot longer on. So, you know, as my last shot, you know, I, I can do it, you know, in this case, I just wanted to make sure I got that in.
Thank you, John, and...
Take all the time you need.
You don't realize what that means.
In all sincerity, you know, John stole a little of my thunder there, but I did want to say that in the eight years I've been here, there's been nobody other than my board who has been more helpful to me than Paul Sagarino in his capacity as the town accountant. I think, you know, John will have big shoes to fill in the accounting office, but I can tell you that he worked in Arlington, and I come from Arlington, and there's not a person there who has a bad thing to say to him. I happened to have to stop over there today on an unrelated matter, and someone accused me of stealing him from Arlington. So, I think we'll be in really good hands, but it would be, I would be very remiss by not acknowledging what Paul's been able to do for me personally and do for the financial team here in Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you. So, John's got big shoes to fill, Paul has a big waistline to fill, so, as he always tells me.
Thank you. Guys, thanks for presenting the information the way you did. It was clear and enabled us to make that decision, so thank you very much.
And thank your board for coming, too. They looked great back there.
Do we have any comments from the general public on that? So, we need to, I would say we need to close. Motion from Jim, second from Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. Thank you, sir. Next item is a two-thirty-six. It's a public hearing, approval, grant of location, Lexington Street, southwest from Bedford Street, conduit.
That one's the poll first.
Excellent.
We're going to discuss them together. We can do it in the poll.
Okay. Hello there.
So, your whole opening just says, for the public, are opening two public hearings, one for the poll and one for the conduit, both on Lexington Street.
Alright.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Manus Bill Wallace, representing Verizon on the poll petition. The two polls in question is poll one A, which is going to be a new poll. This is on Lexington Street, right where the new construction's taking place, right at the corner.
Yes.
So, we're going to be, we're asking to be able to place a, a new poll and also to move an existing poll about thirty-three feet. This will allow for the opening for the street to go into the new construction area and also allow for facilities to be provided for the new, the new construction. Pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
My name is Maureen Carroll, and I'm here on behalf of the EverSource Company, and I'm here on a petition for the conduit. It's going to be on Lexington Street, southerly from poll two slash one A, approximately twenty-five feet southwest of Bedford Street. There's going to be a distance of about six feet of conduit, and this will provide the underground electric service to the new three-lot residence.
Same property?
Correct.
Excellent. Anything else that you guys want to say? I believe we're square from an administration standpoint, look like...
Yes, everything's all set with Public Works relative to this.
Any questions or comments from anybody here? So, with that said... Motion to approve from Joe, second.
Yeah, do, do we need to close the public hearing? Yeah, you need public comment first.
Let's do that. Is there any public comment on either of these items? No. So, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion from Joe, second.
We close the public hearing on both, alright?
On both items, yes. So, motion from Joe to close the public hearing. Second from Mike, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. So, going back...
Oh, I'll make a motion, you want to vote both of them at the same time?
Probably do two motions, okay?
Yes.
Make a motion for grant of location Lexington Street, southwest from Bedford Street for conduit. I'll make a motion for the same address for a poll.
You want us to vote separately?
Please. It's two separate public hearings, I think.
The first one you said is the conduit, so let's do the conduit first, Joe.
And I'll second it.
So, motion from Joe to approve the conduit, second from Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, and...
Motion for the poll now.
Motion from the poll by Joe. Second from Bob, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. So, five-zero-zero on both items, Betty. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, item two-thirty-seven is a new public hearing. This is regarding the potential approval, potential transfer of a wines and malt and alcohol license from Sing Saab Incorporated, doing business as Sing and Ching, to Aisha Ginwala Incorporated, doing business as Almeida at one-eighty-four Cambridge Street. And we're also going to approve the, we're also going to vote on the potential approval of the manager.
One quick question, if I would. Did you pronounce all the names correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Please, just say yes. Thank you.
And we apologize for that.
Yes. So, good evening, gentlemen.
My name is Attorney Courtney Ball. I'm from Dakota Shion Associates, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Here with me is Sarfas Ginwala. He runs the corporation, Aisha Ginwala Inc., with his sister, Asma Banu, and they have experience in the restaurant business. They currently, Asma Banu is taking over the JMP Fine Indian Cuisine down in Boston, and Sarfas is bringing his experience up here in running Almeida Cuisine, which is at one-eighty-four Cambridge Street, which is formerly known, you know, was formerly the location for the Sing Ching Restaurant and the Chetanad Grill, and before that, the Bombay Club and Mugals. Sarfas purchased this at the end of May this year and has a lease in place through February, the end of February, two thousand twenty-three. He has received a special permit for the use of the property from the planning department on November fifteenth, so we will be recording that after the twenty-day appeal period. You know, he's aware of the town server policies and the town alcohol rules and regulations and the related state rules, has plenty of experience. The floor plan hasn't changed. It's been approved by the building, police and fire department, and he just got the building to approve his new sign. So, we are seeking approval for the wine and malt beverages on-premise license and approval for Sarfas to be the manager of record. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I know we have a number of public hearings, and I don't want to take up too much time, but if you could just take like one or two minutes and just tell us about the restaurant and the food and what you got from it.
So, I'm, my name is Sarfas Ginwala, and I've been in the business of Indian restaurant for fifteen years. And we're going to serve authentic Indian, Indian food, and we have a diversity of lunch buffet for office hours from eleven-thirty to three o'clock. Then we have a la carte from five to ten. And, and it's been a, we're received good by the town. The response is pretty good since we opened, and hopefully, we are serving, we hoping to serve for a longer time and, and have a good relationship with the town and, and hopefully, the, the restaurant would be a success and also live in the town. So, it's a, it's a great opportunity for me to serve the community. And, and, yep, and, and I'm also cook too, so, I'm happily able to cook for you guys as well.
We are available for grand openings, so...
Sure, definitely.
Just to get that out there. Any other questions or comments? So, you've already alluded to, actually, I'll, I'll save my comment for the end. So, John, any questions on the behalf of administration?
No, everything was fine. Again, this is a transfer, so the, the restaurant has been in place, and so this is a transfer facility.
Okay. So, the gentleman to my left generally like to try to remind you and make you aware of how seriously we take the serving of alcohol, so if you guys want to flip a coin and, and get into that.
For what you already had said about the alcohol earlier tonight, I'm sure you know what our rules and regulations are about food and serving and how many drinks, and would hate to have to lock it up for a couple of days if you made an error on that part of it, but it is all part of being in town. We don't have any bars in this town. We have restaurants that serve alcohol, so, you know.
Yeah, and I think you, you would find that it's certainly a restaurant with, you know, that, that's primary focus, extremely primary focus.
Miss anything?
Nope, you got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Any questions from the public on this one? This is a public hearing, doesn't look like there are, so we should go ahead and tighten up the public hearing part of it.
Can I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion from Bob to close the public hearing on two-thirty-seven, second from Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. So, public hearing is closed.
And I make a motion now that we approve the transfer of the license from Sing Saab to Aisha Ginwala.
Second.
Motion from Bob to approve, second from Joe, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain.
As the manager.
So, I believe, yes.
The manager?
Yes. And Mr. Ginwala, you're, you're also going to be the manager, I believe.
Okay.
So, resident, owner, manager, cook.
Claw, washer.
Yeah, yeah.
I would make that motion too.
Motion from Bob to approve the manager, second from Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. I believe I have transferred this. I've been here to help transfer the legal license every time, all the names you've mentioned. I hope you're here for a long time, as you mentioned, and I hope I'm not around next time it transfers. So, sincerely, good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
And I meant what I said about being available for open houses.
Thank you, Eric.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is, next item is also a public hearing. This is two-thirty-eight, and this is regarding the approval... Transfer wines and malt alcohol license from Bickford's Grill to Frank Pepe's or Pepe's at seventy-five Middlesex Turnpike. And I believe we are also looking to, Betty, you want us to address the manager at Pepe's and also an alteration of the premises and the floor plan?
Please, yes.
You want those done separately, each of the three items?
That's up to you on this.
You can make a one motion as part of, when you get to that point.
Okay, and if somebody's uncomfortable with that, they can speak up at that time. Otherwise, we'll just do it as one. So, welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Chair, members of the board, staff. My name is Bill Proya. I'm here for the applicant tonight. Kevin Gagliard's with me, the manager, if we get our approval. And Ken Berry's here on behalf of ownership.
Excuse me for one second. Ron, why don't you just grab one of the chairs and just slide it up so you don't have to stand there the whole time? Because you're going to the other side of this.
Yeah, Teddy, Ron, I can't see for Bickford's, who was hopefully transferring to these, John.
Please sit, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't want to see Ron standing the whole time.
Just quickly, we are proposing to occupy some of the former Uno space at the mall, about thirty-eight-hundred square feet. We're proposing ninety-eight seats and dining room. There are no sort of pub-style seating, it's pure dining room here. Pepe's has been making pizza for almost a hundred years, since nineteen-twenty-five. I don't know if anyone's ever been to any of their shops.
John, do you go to the opening?
What's that? No.
Okay. A hundred and twenty-five years ago, is that?
Yeah, it's a classic pizzeria, I would call it, and just, for my own testimony personally, I went to college in Connecticut and used to go to the New Haven shop a bunch of times. And I don't know if anyone else had this saying, but my buddies and I had this saying that there's pizza and there's Pepe's. So, that's how good it is, so if you haven't had it, you really ought to try it. This will be the second store in Massachusetts if we're approved. There's been one operating three years in Chestnut Hill at the mall. It's been very successful, and we expect the model to transfer to town and be very successful here as well. The other shops are in Connecticut, Rhode Island, in New York. And this would be the eleventh store, again, second in mass, if we're approved. The space, you're familiar with the Uno space? If you're looking at the mall, it's just to the right of the old Sears pad, the Primark. There'll be an outside presence on that side of the mall. The main entrance will be inside the building, and one egress into the front of the building. But we have all our land use permits in place, so I think we're ready to go. I'd like to have you hear from a lot of experience. He's been familiarized with the city, the town's regulations and policy, so I'll let him say a little bit about that.
Hello, Kevin Gagliard. I came on with Pepe's three years ago when they opened up in Chestnut Hill, and I've been operating that location over there for three years. Prior to that, I was with Pizza Regina for seven years, so I have a long background of family pizzerias. And I had a working relationship with one of the main people that are with Pepe's now, and he found me at Regina's and, and brought me over to help them expand up into this market. So, we've been very successful. We get a, we have a great relationship with everyone over in Newton. You know, we're not really, we're just a family pizzeria. We're usually, on our busiest day of the year, we're still closing down at ten o'clock, and, and the day's over, we're strictly mostly a family operation.
Thank you. Anything else you guys want to add? No.
If I might, since you are familiar from your college days, in Connecticut, there's a demarcation between Yankees fans and Red Sox fans. How many stores are in Red... a demarcation between Yankees fans and Red Sox fans, how many stores are in Red Sox Nation and how many stores are in the Yankee Nation?
The majority of stores are in Red Sox Nation.
All right, okay.
So, we want to add one more, just to make sure.
Okay.
So, Kevin, you're currently the manager at Chestnut Hill.
Correct.
So, you're the proposed manager for Burlington.
Training my replacement over in Chestnut Hill, because we always train people for extended period of time, so we have them solid before I go on to the next project, which is the Burlington location, which I'll be managing.
So, given the modifications you're probably going to have to make over there, if this is approved, you'll be the manager when it opens?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. I don't have any other questions, any other questions?
I just have a couple of quick questions. I assume there's going to be takeout at this location as well?
Correct.
Just, I know the other restaurants in the mall do this, are there going to be areas out in the parking lot designated for takeout for Pepe's, and it looks like you also have delivery drivers, will be the areas reserved just for delivery drivers?
Well, we don't have any delivery drivers, I'm not sure where that came from.
It says delivery, that might be incoming deliveries, it says delivery access.
I believe the landlord, yeah, I believe the landlord has set aside six parking spaces.
And they'll be marked out?
Be marked out with, you know, signs, I think it's after 5:00 and on weekends for Pepe's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? There being none, now, this is, we're actually voting on a potential transfer from Bickford's to Pepe's, so this is a license that is currently owned by one entity and would presumably be transferred to a new entity, so this is not one of the licenses that's available.
Correct, it's a transfer.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the public on this? No, so.
So, can I ask a question regarding the chairman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, we're going from Bickford's to Pepe's, we got to get into the discussion of what Bickford's, do they apply to everything that we asked for?
That's the next license.
The next one, the next one, okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
So, is there a motion to close the public hearing, seeing as that there are no questions from the public? So, motion from Bob to close the public hearing, second from Jimmy, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0 to close the public hearing, ask for the motion, and I'd like, yeah, let's go ahead and, any specific questions on the alteration of the premises and the floor plan that anybody has? No. Okay, so, this we will take care of with one potential motion, the approval of the transfer, the approval of the manager, and the approval of the alteration of premises and the floor plan.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just one question regarding the alterations, has construction begun yet down there, or when is that scheduled to begin?
Well, we have possession of the premises, our building permits been issued, and we're really in the, I guess, the demolition stage, cutting in trenches and things like that on the floor.
Okay, just don't want to get into the situation we had earlier this year with permits were issued, licenses were issued, and nothing ever got done.
What's the timeline for opening?
But, it's about a seven-month build, so it'll be May, maybe May to June, we'll be opening.
Sounds reasonable.
And we would encourage you to stay in communication if there's any changes to that one way or the other, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? No, so regarding all three items, does anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the transfer of the wines and malt alcohol license from Bickford's to Pepe's, and we approve the new manager, and I again apologize for not having your name here in front of me, and the alteration of the premises also, the floor plan.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Joe, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have you guys given us field about the grand opening thing?
They were here, they were here for that, yeah.
Now, Bickford's better not be selling any alcohol right now.
Yeah.
It's got to get approved by the state, so.
Yeah, he's so, that's okay.
So, 239 is also a public hearing, and this is for the potential approval of a transfer of an all-alcohol license from the Knights of Columbus at 8 Blanchard Road to Bickford's Family Restaurant, 6 Cambridge Street. Same deal on this, we will go ahead, this is also a public hearing, and we will go ahead and we'll address all four potential approvals, actually, on this one, let's do the approvals, yeah, we'll do the approvals, all four at the same time, on this one as well, and again, this is a public hearing, so, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Tom Murphy represents the Knights of Columbus, Terry McKenzie represents Bickford's, who's the buyer, this is kind of part two of what, the item that was just before you, the Knights of Columbus, as many of you know, has kind of scaled back in recent years and has closed its doors, they're still going to continue in their charitable endeavors, but the hall is no longer in place, as such, they had no more use for their liquor license, and Bickford's was looking to upgrade theirs from a beer and wine license to an all-alcohol license, so with the vote that you just took, the Bickford's beer and wine will be going to Pepe's, and if the matter before you is approved, the Knights of Columbus's all-alcohol license will go to Bickford's. I think the board knows that this has been a while in the making, much of which, some of which is attributed to some work that Bickford's had to do to their building, my understanding that it's all complete, and Ron could obviously fill you in on that, so if there are any other questions, obviously, we're happy to answer them, but otherwise, we ask the board to look favorably on the request.
Mr. Chairman, if I may step in at this point, since this was a bit of discussion relative to building issues?
Sure, yeah.
So, what had happened, Bickford's had brought forward a request to consider being considered for an all-alcohol, they met with the subcommittee several times with, and the issues were brought to the table as to two things, one was egress for the building that we were concerned, the town was concerned over egress and increasing the potential usage of the building by going to an all-alcohol, and requested that a second egress or an egress on the left-hand side of the building be provided from the street, and the second area was basically fire requirements and putting in a sprinkler system, so based on those discussions, those were taken care of, they've been confirmed through the building department and the fire department, that those two considerations have been met, so as far as the building construction issues and the quality of the building, they have been met, so now that Bickford's has the capacity to have the egress on what was considered the cafe dining side of the restaurant, and it is sprinkled throughout at this point in time. So, those were the access issues that were pointed out, and they have egressed, and I have memos from both building and fire department confirming that.
Mr. Chairman, I might just add too that several of the members are the ones that brought that forward, saying that they really felt that the public deserved the safety in this, and I'm glad that they did, and our owners are happy, much happier now that they are a much qualified building, so thank you to them for doing due diligence, and I hope that we've satisfied their request.
It sounds like you did, so thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Just what has already been said, actually, and I've talked with Ron and Tom on this, and it's been a long time coming, I appreciate you at Bickford's addressing the concerns of the board, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the, any questions or comments from the public on this? No, so, this is a public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion from Joe to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I also have, if part of this is the new manager who's here.
Okay, thank you. So, second, so we have a motion from Joe to close the public hearing, and we have a second from Jimmy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so the public hearing is closed, so Derek, you're the proposed manager, if you want to come forward in case anybody has any questions. Now, you're at the restaurant currently?
Correct.
Okay.
I've been working for Bickford's about nine years, so I've been with that for quite some time.
Okay. Any questions for or about Derek, from anybody? We have his qualifications and his resume and his information in front of us, who is the manager now?
Currently, we have Ann Ferguson, who is looking to retire from the company.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Derek? Questions regarding the alteration of the premises and the floor plan that John just referenced? Any questions regarding the change of license category, I think we've had this conversation a couple of times, anybody have any questions on that? No, so with that said. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I said we're on a roll.
So, with all of that being said, is there anything you gentlemen want to add before we go ahead and, no, okay.
Would you like us to do this each individually, or would you like to do it as a group?
It didn't seem like anybody picked out any specific questions, so let's just do it as a set.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for approval of transportation of alcohol from Knights of Columbus, 8 Blanchard Road to Bickford's Family Restaurant, I'd like to make a motion for change of license category, wine and malt license to all alcohol license, I'd like to make a motion for alteration of premises or floor plans, I'd like to make a motion to new manager at Bickford's.
Derek Damm. Motion from Joe, second from Bob, Betty, you okay with the way?
You okay with that?
Yeah, he did, yeah, we did, yeah.
Yep.
Motion from Joe to approve, second from Bob, all four, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0, so, first of all, congratulations, thank you. Tom, I really don't want to let this opportunity pass to just sort of do what you've already kind of done, which is mention the Knights of Columbus, I think at one time, probably all of us had had, have had some sort of interaction with the Knights, I know that we're lucky in our community to have several entities that do a lot in the way of charity, and if you look at the history of the Knights of Columbus, and you take into consideration how many people have had interaction with them, I think you'd be hard pressed to find any organization that has given more to the town as an organization than the Knights, if you want to elaborate on that, you're welcome to, I think this is kind of, I'm happy for you guys, this to me is, is sort of the culmination of a little bit of a sad event in that this organization, which is a strong organization, full of really good town guys and ladies, really no longer having a presence in the.
Yeah, thank you for those kind words, I'm sure they appreciate it, and I know that I've been involved down there over the years in different things, and it is, it's been a great organization in town, and thinking back over the years, all the people who've been involved in it, it's truly staggering when you think about it, I mean, when I first came into being in the late 50s, early 60s, it was kind of the only social organization in town, but time changes and people's habits change, and there's still a core group, they're still very involved in their charitable organizations, in charitable endeavors, they have scholarship funds, they have special children funds, they have all sorts of things that they do, and they're going to continue doing that, they're trying to, and they might have already, I'm not 100% sure, make arrangements with a neighboring Knights of Columbus where Burlington members would have access to their facilities, so it's not entirely going away, it's just that there's not going to be a.
Physical presence, yeah.
Social meetings in the town anymore, but it's a very strong organization, they do good things, they'll continue to do good things, and I'm sure you'll still see them around town in various capacities, I do appreciate the good words.
Sure, and you'll pass that on behalf of all of us, please.
They all watch this stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you might, in the Knights, like so many organizations, whether it's veterans organizations, road degree, the Lions, people are busier today than they may have been years ago, and just don't have the time to give, I was a former third-degree Knight in Chelsea where I grew up, and with all the other things going on, that one kind of fell by the wayside, but the Knights of Columbus has always been at the forefront of doing good stuff, charitable work in their communities.
Unfortunately, reality, like you say, everybody's busier, and there's a lot of other options nowadays than there might have been 30, 40 years ago, but thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next item is 240, this is for the potential approval of the Disability Access Commission Use of Handicapped Parking Fine Funds, we're dismayed that we, people still incur these fines, but we're more than happy to see the money used for good things, we've been given a fair amount of backup on this as well, John, do you want to add anything to what we've already given?
No, we've done this several times before, Bob's familiar with this, but, you know, we've proved this before and didn't see the need for, you know, for the council to come in here to present, so I think you're all well aware, you know, of the program, trying to do, you know, trying to enforce handicap parking, especially during the holiday season, and people, you know, tend to try to skirt the law on that, and so we'll hopefully be there to catch them.
Bob, do you want to reference exactly what it is we potentially be doing?
Sure, yeah, and if we could, I would like to take these as two individual votes, it won't take any longer to do as two, the special details, we have an amount that of not, of $10,000 to be used for the details through the holiday season, we may not use all of that, but that's a number that gets us through the holiday season, we believe, so I would like to make a motion to approve $10,000 from the Handicapped Parking Fine Fund that already exists to pay for the special police details down, primarily at the mall.
Second.
Motion from Bob to approve the special details for the Burlington Police Department, second from Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0 on the details.
And the second item, to finish making the human service building accessible, we are requesting 6,000, not more than $6,000 to be used in the back of the building, in the recreation entrance, for two automatic door openers to be installed, so people have access through the requirements of ADA in the back of the building, so not to exceed 6,000, again, from the handicap parking fine fund.
So, motion from Bob on the two accessible door openers at Burlington Recreation, second from Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0 on that.
Thank you.
So, okay, on the, item 241, on the municipal electricity aggregation, so John, if you could kind of, and we've been given, this is not a real complicated item here, but a synopsis of exactly what it is.
So, for several years, the town has been purchasing electricity for residential homes in the town, it's been at a better rate than the standard rate charged by National Grid, but that's no longer the case, so what's happening is the rates that we can, or Eversource, I'm sorry, you know, these companies keep changing, but Eversource, and what's happening is with the new rates, it's gone above, so we're switching everybody back to the Eversource rate, because the rate that we would be charging would be slightly higher, so this has been a program that's benefited, you know, the residents of Burlington, everybody's always been able to opt out, but because of the new rates, we're going to be opting everybody out of the program. Nothing, you don't have to do anything, no, you know, so on the December read that you get, in your January bill, we'll be showing the new rate, you know. we'll be showing the new rate, you know, as part of the, the Eversource standard rate.
The public doesn't have to do anything?
Public head doesn't have to do anything. Right. This is handled, you know, in-house. So, the bids came in higher. A program we've been running three or four years now has been, you know, fairly successful. But again, it's not working out at this point.
So, is there a motion for this one?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right.
I can...
So, motion from Bob. Second from Joe to approve this item. The municipal electricity aggregation. Community Choice Power Supply Program for the Town of Burlington. Motion from Bob. Second from Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. So, for citizens' time, so I'm going to go with... Yep. Okay. So, I'll go with, so Mrs. Weldon, Mrs. Nash, I have, why don't you guys come up first? I know that... Okay. Yep. Come on up. So, I would say to both of you, I would say to both of you respectfully that you were nice enough to join us at our last meeting. So, if you've got new information, we'd love to hear that. This is regarding access to the Council on Aging. And again, we're looking for any potential new information that you might have on that.
Okay. Well, I know the petitions that I had signed.
Okay.
Because at the last selectmen's meeting, we were told there were many meetings on this subject looking about the door with easy access to the handicap parking. But I tried to, there were no minutes of any of these meetings, and no one who signed this petition was ever aware of a notice of such meetings.
Okay. So, you have a petition?
I told them, and then they, they read the clip on top, and then they signed it.
So, we'll take the petition.
So, therefore, this petition was circulated and signed by people actually using the COA. I didn't go out and get signatures from other people.
Okay.
On these pages, there's 62 signatures. Now, the other thing that we didn't mention last time was the Americans with Disabilities Act, the guide, the guide for small towns...
Yep.
...says, quote, "Accessible parking spaces must be located on the shortest accessible route of travel to an accessible facility entrance," end quote. It also says, quote, "Accessible parking spaces may be clustered in one or more lots if equivalent or greater accessibility is provided in terms of distance from an accessible entrance." Now, the currently locked door is 18 feet from the handicap parking. The front unlocked door is the intended new handicap area that you told me about last time. I measured it. It's 95 feet from the intended future handicap parking area to the front door. That's a big difference. And the ADA says, quote, "Towns must make reasonable modification to policies, practices, and procedures to avoid discrimination against individuals with disabilities." And your policy and practice of locking that door discriminates against people with disabilities. Please unlock the door.
Okay.
And you previously stated privacy was a reason for locking that door. But common sense says there is no expectation of privacy in a public corridor in a public building. And as for the concern about a hostile invasion, a person would have to drive seven eighths of the way around the building to get to that locked door. And as opposed to pulling up in front and coming right in the front door.
So, John, we had, so Marge came back to work, or is going to be coming back to work.
Correct.
Okay. And I believe what we stated previously is that we were not really prepared, nor were we interested in making any kind of decisions to change policies without giving Marge a chance to get back and get her feet under her. And I believe we all expressed a desire to be supportive of her. So, she's back. And is there any plan for any sort of a conversation around this?
So, I began, she's back today. So, she's back part-time.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay.
Trying to give her, you know, some consideration for, you know, what she's going through. And so, I did have a conversation with her this morning.
Okay.
And we met. And I've asked her to talk to her Council on Aging members.
Okay.
You know, of the board, to continue this conversation. But again, we stated all the things we stated last time, you know, of the concerns, and that this had been worked up through various, you know, pieces. And, you know, through various discussions. And so, that's where we stand. But she is reviewing. And again, the, you know, the various issues as stated are still what's on the table. So, I've asked her to consult with, you know, members of her board to, you know, continue this conversation. But again, we've relocated the staff to the other end of the building. So, again, you know, you know, we have issues now because, you know, all our staff and check-in procedures are on the other side of the building. And that's where, you know, they are located. And Bob, you were a part of that when we, you know, set all this up, you know, as part of, you know, discussions when the plans, you know, were approved at various stages. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Mrs. Nash, anything that you wanted to add? Any new information?
Right, right. In fact, I find it ironic. I always love coming to these meetings because I learn things I didn't know I didn't know about the electricity for entrance. And I was going to ask a question, but we'll let that ride. But I was interested that there's going to be up to $6,000 to make two handicap accessible entrances to the recreation department, which is in the same building, where we have to have one entrance for the elders. But that was, that's an aside, prologue, as Shakespeare would say. When I went on television, and who knew that people watching people? And I got responses in four different ways. And they reminded me, now that I have become a senior, which most of us don't think like that, but anyhow, I discovered seniors may have trouble walking, but they don't have trouble thinking. And they certainly care about the senior center. That came through to have me clear. I got responses in four ways. When I went up to the center, I talked to people. And one person, for instance, said, "Why do we have to tear up the front of the building and spend a lot of money to put in more handicap access when we could just leave the door that most people prefer open and get two sign-in machines so that if you sign in coming in the front door or the back door, a lot cheaper, quality improvement, and cost reduction?" Then I got phone calls from people who were concerned about the SHINE program, which I hate to admit, I don't even know quite what it is, but that it seemed as if the lack of access was disturbing to a number of those people. And then I got emails. And the emails had to do with things like Meals on Wheels being impacted negatively. And then I even got snail mail, my favorite, including someone who had two designs that might aid the current fiasco that is going on. And I do have to say that when I was questioning people at the senior center, I was able to witness that when the van comes and has to use the lift to drop people off, the traffic backed up because with one entrance, the van was making it hard for other people to get packing. So, those were the kind of responses I got, which made me think if these had been talked about before anything was done, we might not be where we are right now. But the second thing, at the last meeting, you had said nothing could be done because the director was out. And I had gotten, maybe the day before, because sometimes this comes halfway through the month, but I digress. I had read here that the director was going to be out. And I read it the same day that I discovered the door was locked. But you go through here, and you get all kinds of useful information, but not a word saying, "Oh, and by the way, you won't be able to get in that other door," or any kind of thing, which seems like that it was, seems strange and ill-time to make this change at the very moment when the director was not going to be there. Because theoretically, you would make a change of this proportion when the director was there to handle all the problems that resulted. So, I found...
Mrs. Nash, the, just to interrupt you. So, the plans were made far in advance of the director not being there. It's also difficult for us to plan around somebody not having the physical ability to come to work. So, we're going to take, you're going to lead the petition, Mrs. Weldon, with us.
Excuse me, but I have one more point.
Okay.
Which really bothers me.
Sure.
Because it seemed like without much trouble. I got people who have good ideas. And I think one of the things that I don't see, month after month here, is perhaps there should be a designated time and place where the director meets with staff and interested people, with seniors, just to share ideas so that we don't find ourselves in this position again of having seniors who don't feel comfortable coming because it's difficult to get in, and they feel they've had this happen without ever being alerted. No meetings that I can see or that Valerie was able to find anywhere. I think that is a huge oversight. The seniors should have some kind of ongoing ability to say something the way our congressmen and so forth stop by and have discussions. It seems that wouldn't be a bad idea to do here. So, that, those are my new ideas. I have to tell you, before this, I hadn't given it a thought. But as I think about it, it seems like something to swallow and do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Millie.
Okay. So, we'll take all that information, and we'll convey it back to Marge, please. All right. Thank you.
Well, again, please unlock that door so that the Town of Burlington cannot be accused of discriminating against people with disabilities.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Weldon.
And here's your petition, here's the petitions I have. There's another page of 30 more that I couldn't find.
Okay.
We aren't the most highly organized part of the town. But we try to.
Well, we did it within a week. Everybody we approached over there couldn't believe that you did that. But I talked to a lady today. She says, "Why don't they just have a sign-in thing using the check-in card, you know, and it would open the door?"
Okay.
And people be able to use it.
All right. Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
There were other... I don't think so. I think you took care of everything. You heard it. You heard what we had to say. That's all we can ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 no. We'll, yeah.
Thank you.
We can get it from there, Millie.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
I'll set, we'll take it right there.
Subcommittee reports. We'll go right to left. James, you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just mention that the Wish Tree program, I think we're all familiar with, getting underway shortly. So, folks, if you're visiting the Burlington Mall, keep an eye out for us up on the second floor.
Thank you. If I could take a moment, Mr. Chairman. We've had the opportunity to, in recent meetings, acknowledge and recognize some of the things that have happened within the police department, as we heard tonight about some of the actions of members of the police department and the good work they do. The fire department had a couple of incidents recently, and I believe the chief has talked to John about acknowledging some of the...
Yes, the next meeting will acknowledge some of that.
Yeah. A structure fire at 85 Network Drive on November 14th. A cooling tower located on the roof of the structure was fully involved in a fire. The fire was extended under the command of Captain Timothy Brown. On the 16th, crews responded to 34 Cambridge Street for an injured patient that required extensive extrication. Several members under the command of Andrew Connery worked for over an hour to extricate and transport the patient to the hospital. And then on the evening of the 16th, crews responded to a residential home for a patient suffering from a medical condition. Once again, it took several members under the command of Captain Robert Paul to remove the patient from the home and safely transport the patient to the hospital. All responses required strategy and tactics not commonly used on a daily basis to bring each situation to a successful conclusion. Those are the kind of things that the fire department wants to be able to acknowledge, just as police do with, with some of the members. So, in the future, we'll have some of these people in to recognize.
So, at the December meeting, we weren't able to organize it for this meeting. But the December meeting, we'll talk about one of those rescues, which was pretty unique, you know, at that point, so.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing.
Okay. I only have a quick one, and then I unexpectedly actually have to leave. Not an emergency, but I have to leave. After I mentioned that there was on Saturday at Marshall Simons a very large in size charity or fundraising effort where money raised for cancer, or the specifically, I believe it was raised for the purpose of research and the continued fight to find a cure for certain types of cancer, specifically breast cancer. There were, I believe there were 30 teams of, I'm going to say young people. These were people anywhere between the age of, say, 18, actually, from the age of 16 up until the age of about, let's say, 30. There was a member, there was a town employee who is over the age of 30 who was there participating in this event. But it was a large undertaking. It was a flag football tournament. A lot of money was raised. A lot of people from the town turned out, as they always do. And I just want to commend the folks who ran that and commend the folks that helped out and attended. And that was on Saturday. And that's it. That's all I have on that. So, I do actually, I apologize, I actually have to leave. So, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay.
And I don't get to...
Get to dismiss us?
I don't get to dismiss us, yes.
We have two people sitting at the table. John, do you want to...
Yes. So, I thought I'd take it under my report. Again, I talked about it a little bit earlier, about the transition. And we talked about it at a workshop meeting we had not too long ago. So, we have before us Paul Sagarino, which will be the town administrator effective March 1st. And we now have John Denizio, who was effective, you know, last week, our town accountant and assistant town accountant. So, that team, we've transitioned into that mode. Paul is without office this month. John has taken over his office. And I will be without office come January 1st. And Paul will be actually transitioned into the administrator's office at that point. So, our plan at this point is to continue to transition various aspects moving forward. And the first will be the budget process. So, as we talked about tonight, you saw our old team together, the financial team, to present the last aspect of fiscal year 19, which was the tax rate setting. And next week, we begin fiscal year 20. But since I won't be here for the full process, Paul will be leading the discussion with the various boards and committees moving forward. So, again, we do financial guideline discussion next week at your next meeting. That will be presented to the Board of Selectmen. I'll ask Paul and John to make that presentation to the board. So, we just wanted to, you know, set that up. We did get the other final piece of business for fiscal year 19 was our free cash settling. So, Paul did finalize Schedule A and got all that information into DOR, and we have a free cash number. You want to talk about that?
Sure. Schedule A's in process.
Okay.
For the town's free cash number, we had another extraordinary number. It was certified at $11,672,567. That type of financial flexibility doesn't happen by accident. We budget extremely conservatively in our budget process. As you know, free cash is essentially generated when we spend less than we budgeted or also when we... when we spend less than we budgeted, or also when we collect more revenue than we budgeted. All of our departments do a great, you know, excellent job of managing their money so that there's money left over at the end of the year. They don't go into it looking to spend every penny. And on an annual basis, all of our departments return funds to the town that becomes part of our free cash. The other aspect that generates a lot of our free cash is when we collect local revenue higher than what we anticipated. We received approximately $4.2 million additional on local receipts. Approximately $2.4 million of that directly relates to licenses and permits, which is something that we very[1469.43][1469.46]intentionally budget very low. Because in order for us to collect that amount of licenses and permits, we're receiving some extremely large building permits that we don't get on an ordinary year. So we tend to keep that budget very low. And then when we receive these types of, types of permit revenues that we've received the past few years, the town then has an opportunity to spend the free cash wisely. So the money comes in, it becomes part of free cash, and then we have to take it to town meeting with a spending plan. So we'll be working on that in the upcoming spring, working with town meeting and the Ways and Means Committee to determine a plan for this free cash. And again, it was an excellent number, $11.6 million, which is, you know, right up there with, you know, some of the town's best years in this area. And it's a direct result of what we feel is just being extremely conservative when we do our budgeting.
If, if I may, Paul, when you talk about spending the free cash, we do budget and spend conservatively regardless of what some people may think. What do you, what do you like to see as far as the amount of that free cash that is opened up to use each year?
Well, the past few years, we've made a conscious decision internally to not spend around $5 million of our free cash. So if you looked at the change from this year to last year, we had $5 million unspent free cash from last year that basically started our pool for this year. We've allocated about $2.5 to $2.75 million for capital warrant articles in both town and the school. As you know, every, on an annual basis, we consider saving some of the free cash by putting it in our stabilization fund or socking some additional funds away in our OPEB trust fund. So every year is a different plan, but in terms of spending that you guys would think of, whether it be sidewalks, dump trucks and things of that nature, building renovations, you know, that's typically around $2.7 million. We'll allocate that towards the upcoming budget process that the town will vote in May.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the members?
Nope. So I just, again, wanted to discuss the transition, which I'm really happy about. So, you know, as I remembered to do tonight. So I'm really glad to see John on board, you know, for many reasons, more personal. But as Mr. Dougherty stated, he comes with a great reputation, so we're glad to, you know, have him on board. So your next meeting in December is the annual licensing meeting. So we'll be doing all the licenses, annual renewal of all the licenses. We have that on board, so you'll be receiving all the information relative to that. And hopefully, everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and we're entering the holiday season. So, you know, this is the year where people actually think of, you know, the various charities, you know, so there's plenty in town. So hopefully you're, you know, supporting, you know, the charities that we have in town. And we know, we've heard people, you know, helping people along with various other groups in town. So very supportive there. So hopefully, people can give consideration. And again, just watch for their neighbors, you know, as we get into the holiday season, because sometimes holiday season can be difficult for people, you know, who have gone through difficult times during the past year. So, so I do want to begin the season by wishing everybody, you know, best health and best of times during this holiday season.
One quick note before we take a motion to adjourn. Betty's been working on the renewals for the licenses for a while now, and I'm sure she's glad that the vote is finally coming.
I accept that. Both Sandy and I have collected about 250 various licenses that our department covers, and the town, the office has been very busy.
And I just wanted to thank her for all the work she and the staff did on making sure that the Bickford Knights of Columbus thing got finished and fixed. There was a lot of interaction with the office, and they made it happen as much as the lawyers did.
For about a year, year and a half.
Yeah, I think I have about 100 emails going back and forth with staff.
I can see, once we took the vote, you would...
If, just as, as an, a side note on town relations, I just want to point out and give condolences to the town of Arlington. The town of Arlington lost a selectman this weekend, Kevin Greeley, who's been serving over 30 years, you know, on that Board of Selectmen. He's, you know, was serving until his untimely passing this past on Saturday. So some of us know, you know, Kevin, and, you know, again, has been, you know, very valuable to the town of Arlington over the years, but he passed very suddenly this weekend. But he was a serving selectman for 30 years on that Board of Selectmen. So again, condolences from town of Burlington to the town of Arlington for their loss.
If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn? All right. Press time.